Large-scale development LSD-13 for Duncan Avenue Apartments submitted by Mandy Bunch on behalf of James Mathias, of Mathias Rentals, property located west of Duncan and north of 12th Street. Do we have a staff report please?
Sure.
And if the applicant would, please come forward.
This proposal is for a, an apartment unit on zero point, excuse me, on two acres, approximately two acres with a parkland dedication of 0.466 acres. This project will consist of three buildings containing 36 units and two-bedroom, one and two-bedroom apartments mixed for a total of 60 bedrooms. The applicant's proposing 63 regular parking spaces, three ADA spaces, and two bike racks. Surrounding developments include single-family homes primarily in an R2 zoning district as well as an industrial development which is Zoned I2. Water exists along Duncan Avenue to serve the proposed development. There is a six-inch sewer line existing along Duncan. Part of this project will propose to replace that with a new eight-inch PVC for approximately 650 feet by the developer which will serve the project. Excuse me. All existing service lines will be connected to the new eight-inch line when it's installed. Duncan Street will have a dedication to meet the 25-foot right-of-way requirement from center line. Duncan is classified as a historic collector and requires a 50-foot total right-of-way. Duncan is proposed to be improved, a minimum of 14 feet from center line with curb, gutter, and storm drain and a sidewalk along the west side. As I mentioned, Duncan is classified as historic collector. Tree preservation, there's an existing canopy of 27.24 percent on the site. The applicant is proposing to preserve 14.05 percent. The requirement is 20 percent and they propose to meet that requirement by providing onsite mitigation with 16 trees. With regard to parkland, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has determined that 0.466 acres shall be dedicated for parkland with a payment of $2,266.25 to meet the balance of the city's requirement for that dedication. There are wetlands that have been delineated on this site. The proposed plan is, the proposed plan has, is under review for a nationwide 404 permit. There's a letter attached to your documentation today and the Corps of Engineers has concurred with the wetland delineation for this property. Staff is recommending that this project be forwarded to the Full Planning Commission with 12 conditions of approval. Those include Planning Commission determination of off-site sanitary sewer improvements. Staff recommends that the existing sanitary sewer line be replaced for approximately 650 feet with a new eight-inch PVC line to provide sufficient capacity to serve the development. All existing service lines will be connected to the new eight-inch sewer line at the cost of the developer. Item two, dedication of right-of-way to meet the 25-foot requirement for Duncan Street. Item three, Duncan Avenue improvements to include a minimum 14 foot from center line pavement with curb, gutter, storm drain, and sidewalk along the west side of Duncan. Item four, Board of Adjustment will need to hear a variance request with regard to the amount of frontage that's remaining for the property after the parkland dedication is removed from the site. The minimum required frontage is 90 feet and with the parkland dedication, there's approximately 46 feet remaining to provide frontage on the city's street. Item number five, a lot split will be needed, will need to be processed to create the parkland tract before it is dedicated to the Parks Board, to the Parks Department. Item six, all overhead electric lines less than 12 KV shall be placed underground. The other items are standard conditions of approval with note, the Parks Board determination for a combination of land and money to satisfy the requirements for this project. That's all I have.
Thank you, Don. Staff reports, trees and landscaping. No additional comments? Engineering?
Yes, you've got a memo from me in your packet. I'll summarize it. It's addressing the concerns. Last time, this was at the subdivision committee meeting. One of the concerns was the sanitary sewer. Visited with David Jurgens, our water and sewer superintendent regarding the water and sewer in the area. The sanitary sewer was improved a few years back to within, I think, 650 feet of the site. They went in and did pipe bursting and replaced the existing, I believe it was a six-inch line with a, I think he said it's a nine-inch line, the way they pipe burst it. We are recommending that the developer continue those improvements up to the site. The existing line will handle the existing flows, but we don't believe it will for this new development. I think that's going to push it over the edge. We had some complaints about sewer overflows at the last meeting, so we are recommending that these improvements be made and they are aware of these recommendations. The water lines, the capacity's there to serve the development. It is an old line. All the lines in this area are old and the City of Fayetteville currently has a program for replacing these lines and this is on the list. It has been identified as an area that needs to be upgraded and this will be done by the city, so we're not recommending that the developer do it at this time because there is sufficient capacity. The drainage problems that were mentioned last time, as a result of that, we met with Mandy and we discussed what needed to be done. We requested that she look at the drainage areas going to the Duncan Street culvert that is just south of this project. That's where this project drains to. There's an existing 36-inch pipe that goes under there. Our current city requirements in our drainage criteria manual are that any new storm sewer be designed to carry the tenure storm event. The numbers that she provided me were kind of a worst-case scenario that included ultimate build-out upstream of the industrial area to the west and that's with no detention. So it's the worst case because that will probably never happen. We have detention requirements. It should not increase above what's there now. The numbers that she provided show that it, the culvert will almost pass the tenure, but not quite. So under existing conditions, we didn't crunch the numbers, but we feel pretty comfortable that the culvert will pass the tenure storm event at this time. So it does meet the current city requirements. We are going to recommend that the street department, or Transportation Division, excuse me, go out and perform some ditch maintenance along Duncan because there is some erosion problems at this time and hopefully that will help some of the problems. But we're not recommending any off-site drainage improvements at this time because the developer is proposing detention that will decrease the site runoff to this drainage area.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Would you care to give us an update on the situation with the parks now that we have a land dedication?
Now that we have a land dedication, yes. I just would like to commend both the developer and the Neighborhood Association for working so well together to find a solution. The developer came back with a redesign to meet the needs of the Neighborhood Association which resulted in a near-half-acre park for the neighborhood which meets a lot of their needs as far as getting them a park, park access without crossing a major thoroughfare. So we're really excited to work with the Neighborhood Association to see how the park will be developed in the future.
Thank you. Do you have, applicant, do you have a presentation at this time?
I just want to go around with Mandy Bunch again, CB Landmarks. The owner is James Mathias. He's right here with us. There was originally another building in this location. The site's about 2.46 acres, I believe, prior to the parkland dedication. So the site originally by ordinance allowed up to 58 units. The original proposal was 48 units and now we're down to 36 units. Also incorporated the park dedication that was a big concern of the neighborhood. They were having to cross a major thoroughfare to access a park and they were real concerned with having actual street frontage so that it was accessible to, excuse me, the neighborhood. So basically what we've done, we've eliminated any building within 350 feet of the street. And there is existing a mobile home park directly to the north and an industrial concern to the west. Generally, I think this was a real good spot for multifamily and the entire region, in fact, is Zoned R2 even though there are several single-family homes, mostly in this general area and into the south as well, there's another mobile home park. So the density is, it's just as, or more dense in several locations, but the direct adjacent homes are, wouldn't be considered R1, I believe, by all the land that they've got. One thing I want to talk about a little bit with the wetlands that's been a concern, there was approximately, approximately .29 acres delineated and the Corps has concurred that. With the current plan, we're actually preserving .1 acres of that which is around a third of that. And then we're also mitigating that with, the wetlands has been considered as a wet swale. Basically, it's a low swale in the area that due to the soil conditions has developed over a period of time. But we're going to replace that or mitigate that with a new wet swale on the western boundary of the property. And if you consider all the mitigative things that we're approaching with the wetlands, we'll be mitigating or preserving up to 62 percent of the original. Also a thing to note with this proposal, our impervious area is 53 percent of the overall area. It's not extremely dense. It will be fairly green. We've maintained large buffer strips around the adjacent property owners at their request and will actually be offsetting future fence onto, further onto our property to maintain the wildlife habitat at his request and also as an avenue to reach the Corps' goals as And we're upgrading the sewer downstream as has been a staff requirement. I'm not sure what else to say. We're here for any questions. I think that Mr. Mathias has gone a long, long way toward meeting the needs of the neighborhood and he's proposing something that's far less dense and is allowed by ordinance and we're here to get this, through this process today and hopefully not make a whole lot of changes from here, so.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll take public comment and if you would, come to the podium to speak. Also, on reference to public comment, we do have in our packets minutes from the last meeting, so we are aware of the public comment that was taken last time. So if you would at this meeting, please address anything new and the changes. I don't think we need to reiterate the comments that were made last time. We're all quite aware of them. So if anyone has, would like to take public comment, if you would, please come forward at this time. Tell us who you are and give us the benefit of your comments.
I'm Mitch Woody. I live on the south side of this proposed apartment complex. I'd like to commend the developer and the engineer to, because of the work that they're doing about the park and the green space. But my main concern now, and I did say something about it once before, but I have pictures there that show the main drainage that I'm concerned about is coming from the north side of the property. Now, on the, on the west side of this proposed complex, the land doesn't actually run from west to east. Now, if you look from the fence over, you can see where behind the Swanson plant it does. But in this case, it runs north and south. My main concern with that building on the south side is that the water's going to run directly from the trailer park straight down on that western edge and go right through that, that building. So the detention pond, I don't think will take care of that. Now, the detention pond should take care of the water flowing down the main part of the property, but as a former real estate broker, I've walked a lot of land and I don't think that this is going to address that particular issue. And one other thing I wanted to ask about is if it's possible to get a city bus route through there. I know we have city buses, you know, running all through the university all around and it'd be awfully nice if we have a set of apartments there if we could have a city bus route.
That's a little beyond the scope with our.
Well, I thought it, I thought it was, but you know, it never hurts to mention these things. But my main concern is that third building because if, you know, if water's going to be coming straight down from the trailer park along the west side of that property, then I don't think that it's, I don't think that the pond on the west side, that little sliver behind the building is going to catch the kind of water that we're talking about flowing down through there. Now, I looked at the city engineer's drawings after our last meeting up here and it showed the contours coming from west to east or from northwest to southeast. And I'm sure these engineering drawings were based on that. But in fact, one picture there shows the, you know, it shows the Swanson property on the west side and you can clearly see that that land is sloping straight down, straight from the north. And I'm just concerned because, you know, if we're basing these drawings on, on contours that don't exist, then we may have a flaw in the future that, that might be a real problem. Now, I have seen the engineer out on the, on that site one day last week. He had some gentleman with him and they walked all up and down through there. I didn't get a chance to visit with the engineer, but it looks like they're out there, you know, paying close attention to what they can do to address the problem. And Mr. Shepherd came over the other day and showed me where Swanson plant with all this massive drainage area that they have behind their plant has now been left to grow a little bit rather than mow it as short as a yard. You know, they may have 20 acres out there and if you have that much drainage and you mow it that short, you know, it's not going to trap much water. So that, I don't know who convinced the Swanson people to let their, their yard grow, but that was a good move. I guess that's about all I have to say. My main concern is just the drainage and the third building. I have no problem with the, with the first two buildings to the north. You know, that's high ground. The way the engineering drawing and drainage is, is set up with a detention pond, I'm sure it'll work just fine. It's only that third building on the south and the, and I really believe that the detention pond needs to be across the entire, well, let's say from, from the way it's drawn on the east side. If it can be drawn farther over to the west, almost to the western fence, I believe that'll go a long way towards solving the drainage problem. Again, my house is one that's in the flow, the main flow of this creek and it's already about to take out a, a large portion of my retaining wall. And if, if that goes, then who knows, you know, how long it'll be before the yard goes if, if the flow continues like it is. And again, I've got a little, a little bridge that was washed away with twice in the past two years. I don't know what's going to happen if it gets any worse. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woody.
Good morning. I'm Brian Albright. I live at 1224 South Duncan and I'm also here to represent Herman Swafford who lives at 1229 South Duncan on the other side of the drainage which connects to Mitch Woody's property. And one of the concerns that we have is the drainage. And Herman has asked me to ask you guys, if he wants that little drainage just deeper, can the city do that or is he responsible for it?
The city does not currently have any drainage easements through there, so at this time it would be at the property owner's expense.
Oh, if he wanted you guys to do it, could you guys do it?
The city has a policy of not maintaining or doing any improvements to private drainage.
Okay. And on the other side, Stanley Solons is my landlord. He lives at 1224 South Duncan and they're also concerned with the flow of the drainage. So that's basically about it. And I want to add one more thing. This state is known as a natural state and I wish to keep it more natural. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
I'm Betty Bowdre and I live on the south side of the proposal and there's three houses there and we have all lived there for like 40 years on, on 12th Street which is directly, and it's a quiet neighborhood and I would like to have the fence eight foot if they're going to go on the south side, the privacy fence. And right now, as far as I know, me and my next-door neighbor not having any trouble with the drainage, so I hope that they don't fix it where we do because right now it's okay for, for my house. Now Mitch has a lot of problems and Herman, but I don't know what's happened, but we used to have problems, but right now we do not. And I guess, and please leave my trees on my property.
Thank you, Ms. Bowdre. Any other comments?
I'm Aubrey Shepherd and we're on, Lauren and I, the north side of the property and on the east of part of the property. We've, we've been, well, I've walked the neighborhood and talked with many, many residents, so I've heard many different concerns. Wanda Peterson's here today. You heard her talk about it last time. She said she didn't want to bore you with it again and it's, it's in your packet. There are still major concerns after last week, what we saw on television, that there are, there were floods nine feet above any previous recorded flood stage in some states. So the houses that, was this Tennessee? I saw it, Don. I don't remember if it was Tennessee or which state, but when some of the big storms went through, nine feet higher than it ever flooded historically. So these same storms are going around us this year. We had a little bit of rain this week. I looked behind Mitch's place and the ditch going through there. A lot of water coming from the old Campbell Sue property, the Pinnacle property is coming down 12th Street, excuse me, as well as through this, what we call the ditch back there that comes between Mrs. Bowdre's property and Mr. Mathias's development. The property up for development is the only portion of the drainage of that little branch that holds its own water currently. It does that with a natural detention pond and it is, it does have the type of soil that water soaks in. It's, that's true in our yard also. We don't have any drainage out of our yard. We walk on pallets to make sure that we can not bog down when it's really wet because the water stands there and it gradually soaks in. I grew up in Louisiana, so I sort of like swamps, so it doesn't bother me if my yard's full of water as long as it's going to soak in naturally in a reasonable amount of time. Therefore, I'm not as uncomfortable with that as some of the people who won't have land downstream over here that some have mentioned such as Wanda in the past. And they may have their flower garden all the way down within, you know, 20 feet or 30 feet or 40 feet of the creek. And the creek, of course, as you can see, for instance, we've got a picture of Wanda's yard on our website. It's www.aubunique.com and it shows 1973. And this was one of those cases when there was a lot of rain, big storm, and it was a case when, I believe, was that Wanda, when there was a?
Stoppage. Uh, there was some of the, uh, pictures from '73 and stuff from '78.
Okay. But there was, there were times historically that there've been, debris piles up 15th Street and slows the outflow under 15th Street and this aggravates the problem. This will, this kind of thing does develop periodically on any stream. Of course, if you have a culvert or a bridge, sometimes you have to clean it out and that was done and helped that problem. But one of our concerns with it is that there is a great deal of development slated all over the Town Branch watershed. And as I, I will say this that I said before, I hope that studies will be done as you go into your, what do you call it, the long-range planning department comes into force so that basins of this sort are looked at carefully ahead of time before developers buy in the area. And maybe the city can give them an idea of what sort of problems they may have with this sort of thing before they buy in and start making plans and then find out that, well, this has some characteristics and it's related to another problem and it's going to impede our, our operation. Upstream from there, properties being bought for the trailer parks, all the trailer parks are, there are three upstream from our house along Town Branch. And the prairie that we're talking about here for development, it's the lowest part of the prairie where it drains down to this ditch. It's what they call moist soil mounded prairie historically. The trailer park immediately north is the same type of soil as a gentleman testified at the last meeting. The crawdad mounds are out there, the chimneys and other characteristics. So these trailer parks hold their own water quite well. And if, any, anytime you come in with a lot of paving, parking, and a lot of roofs, then you will find that drainage will change radically and you'll have much, much faster runoff from this property. So this is true of this development and as I say, what makes it a little more critical than it might have been in the past if it'd been done 30 years ago, there was nothing else going on in the area. But there are things coming right behind these guys and I hope that the city will soon have the long-range planning in force and, and they'll be studying some of these things before it happens because it is critical. I, I also wanted to suggest that possibly Mr. Mathias apply for a, a waiver from the sidewalk requirement. This will be 100, approximately 100 feet of sidewalk across the front. It goes nowhere. The existing homes, Mr. Woody's property on the south and ours on the north do not have sidewalk. I was out there during the big rain, what was it, day before yesterday, and the little ditch along there absorbs the water. There's grass growing and it's been mowed, but it's, it still helps. The water's standing there. It wasn't running faster in the worst of the rain off of that area. And that's something you lose if you curb and gutter that area of the street. The sidewalk will not connect anything, will not help anybody get off that property. You're still going to have to go across to get to the existing sidewalk. And you will lose just that much more absorbent soil that helps to decrease the drainage or protect you from drainage downstream. So this, this requirement, while I understand the need for it in new development because someday when it comes along, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a provision that he could put up some, some small amount of money that goes toward that future improvement or something or say that he will participate in it if it's done, the whole thing. But in the immediate future, it would be worthless and I would rather he save his money to, to do something else important such as that sewer work that our neighbors who live on the south side of the street, I mean, I'm sorry, on the east side of the street, many of them have had sewer backups. So I'd rather the money go to that. And also to the extra two feet on Mrs. Bowdre's fence and Mrs. Crafts and, and Simpson's on that side of the street if he chooses to do that and protect, give them more privacy from, from the development and, and the thing about the vegetative, vegetative barriers that I've asked for, they are important for the wildlife. We've got birds nesting all over the property in question right now and this will be along the fence lines or where trees naturally grow up. That's, that's where they exist in many cases, all over town and out in the country too. But it's also important because of the noise. During construction, there's, there will be a lot of noise, obviously, and with that many more people living there, there will be a great deal of noise. There'll be extra light. So if, if you live near the, the area, then those things are very important and we appreciate his taking that into consideration. That's not something the city has to do, but it's something a developer can do voluntarily that actually may save you money in the long run. You don't have to run a bulldozer to destroy that vegetation and then pay somebody to plant a little bush. It'll take another lifetime to, to become shade. And so it's, it's very important that you keep all those things there. Like, what do they call them out in Kansas?
Aubrey.
Okay, by time running out.
Well, no, this is something that has already been accomplished and.
Okay. All right, well.
Could we move on to?
And we, several people also agreed with what Mitch asked, that, that he consider removing the, the building that's in the main wetland section. That's been something expressed by several people, that that one. That that one does create the greatest risk, that the detention-retention area conceivably would fail in a major storm. So I hope he'll look at that. And because that, this is a real concern to people downstream. Some of you have been out there and looked at it, and looked at everything downstream from there, and some of you may not have. But this is a real danger, and their project is, Mandy's doing a great job designing, and but a 10-year flood projection is no longer a valid projection. We've had what are called 100-year floods, a lot in the last 10 years all over the United States. And so that, that means that every, every little bit of soil left that will allow the water to soak in. One last point that I haven't made to anybody, I guess, here in this meeting. I would hope that some sort of study would be done of the underground water, because I don't know what will happen. We have underground water under the prairie area over in the trailer park. That's why the crawdads come out of that water. They're not creek crawdads. These are the mountain, the burrowing crawdads. They've been identified as a distinct subspecies in the Ozarks. Now, this is typical. It's also true across the street on Ellis and other areas down south of there and upstream. You find that there is a layer of water, you know, I'd like to see it.
Aubrey, could I interrupt you again?
Okay, I'm asking.
We're getting something that's not covered by a, I don't think it's covered by ordinance also, or are you willing to do this survey and then give us the benefit of it?
Right. The simple point is that we need to know whether the water under adjacent property, it's the underground water that's shallow, will be affected by construction, either by filling or by digging for foundation work. That's something I appreciate his considering in this process, and I know it's not something that you normally address. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in our group?
If you would, come forward, please, and tell us who you are.
We have other, other items on the agenda after this, and their meter's running.
My name is Wanda Peterson, 1325 Ellis. I've lived at that address now for 45 years, the first day of June. Now, we have, we have a water problem, too. We have had a water problem. If you don't mind, I'll tell you what we've done to deal with it.
Ma'am, could you, when you address these water problems, could we address problems that are impacted by this project? Because the existing water problems have been there for years and years and years, and from the public comment that has been made, probably no one should have a house in that area. None of you should live there.
Well, that's true. It should never have been built on it, but you know, back 45 years, we were not sold.
That being said, could we limit the public comment to the impact of this particular project and how it relates to the problems?
Well, I think it's, it's all the same area. It's all the same drainage basin. And I think it, you just need to hear some of the things that we have had to do, living there for 45 years, to deal with it ourselves.
Well, the last meeting that we had, these, where there was public comment, these things were described, and they are in our minutes.
No, no, not what I wanted to tell you about.
Yeah, if you have something new, please present it, but it's, we've had considerable comment on drainage.
Well, apparently, you're not interested, so I'll just let it stand at that.
Are there any other comments? Anyone like to deal with things other than what has already been discussed?
Hi, I'm Lauren Hawkins. I live at 1101 South Duncan.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Or pull it down where it's?
I was afraid. I want, want to commend Mr. Mathias and Mandy Bunch for, for their work in, in trying to resolve these various issues. It's a difficult one. Now, we have green space, which seems like the most buildable land. They propose to build on wetland. Even with the detention that they're planning, the pavement proposed will increase that water flow tremendously, whether this is a detention that will, I assume, take that into, to account, to be more detention than what is needed right now. I have to, again, get back to that. I find this really inappropriate to the single-family housing neighborhood. I realize that it's zoned. What's legal is not, does not make it right. There were two homes there. What's a reasonable investment, return on investment doubling that to duplexes? Three, four apartment warehouses really seems an incredible increase to a neighborhood, and really inappropriate. I, I don't think that you'd, it gets back, back again to, oh, is this, is this a matter of being a, a working-class neighborhood? I really, I think those are my comments. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a.
Any other?
We have a creek cleanup this weekend, and she's, Jennifer Creel has done a tremendous amount of work organizing it. We hope everybody comes out and gets familiar with what you've been tormented with the last couple of meetings. And we're going to be down there getting, down and dirty in the creek and picking up the things that washed from the campus and Sixth Street and everywhere upstream. And that's this Saturday from, pardon?
Bridge Range Water.
Yeah, there's some nice things. 8:00 AM, Walmart bags are popular, but they're easy to take care of and useful for recycling. This is 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Jennifer's going to have lunch for everybody who participates and some other activities. So it'll actually be a good time and, and a good place to be this Saturday. And even if it rains, if it rains a little bit, you'll just get in the spirit of it and enjoy it more.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine, we're going to clean the creek.
Could you tell us where the meeting place is?
Okay, you meet at the church on Hill, the Hill Street or Hill Avenue Church of Christ at Hill and 11th, at slightly before 8:00 AM, if you can get there. But we'll take, we'll let you register during the process. And you do sign a waiver saying that you're not going to sue the, the landowners if you get run over by a big old snake or something down there while you're in the creek and so forth. So this will be a, a nice time, and please, please participate. And I want to, I have some things I want to put on the record and hand to you, but thank you.
All right. Do anyone else like to make public comment on this project? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the committee for questions, comments, and motions. I'll open it up. Matt or Mandy, there's been quite a bit said on slopes and drainage. Could you address, Mandy, I guess first, on the, Mr. Woody's questions and comments about the direction of slope?
Okay. I want to preface this, I guess, with saying what we're tasked to do under, just a, I guess, an ethical more obligation as well as one to comply with the drainage ordinance, is to make sure that after this development is constructed, that the problems, that the area does not have problems, or problems that are existing aren't worsened. One thing that Mitch was, Mr. Woody was discussing was water that may be directly coming off of, and I'm going to use this, you guys can see it, everyone can't, but the water coming down from the trailer park, if it's directly coming down on the Pinnacle Foods property already, there's absolutely nothing I can do to stop that, because that's not on our property. What we have done is introduced a large swell on that western boundary that is actually diverted through the detention pond, because there's a burn constructed on this side of the ditch. And that's what we've done to physically impede that water from going directly to the ditch through the site. Anything that goes through the site, we are endeavoring to get into the detention pond, period. And the detention is designed, it's, it's not strictly for the 10-year storm. We have to analyze from the two up to the 100-year storm. And the pond actually decreases the 100-year storm by 5%. I believe at the worst build-out scenario. And the worst build-out scenario, I know that Matt mentioned this before, but you might be able to see a little bit better with the picture, this is existing Pinnacle. This is the remainder of their property. The analysis I did considered this entire property developed in a similar fashion as this, with the culvert analysis. So I believe that we've addressed the drainage issue as well as we possibly can within the site. I know that there are some downstream problems here, and there are, I think, most likely houses constructed in the floodplain along Town Branch Creek, which runs in this area. A large majority of the water that's north of this property flows directly to the, to the creek. It all flows this direction. There's just a piece of this trailer park that flows through parts of Aubrey's property and through this property. And that's what we're trying to pick up. Anything that touches this boundary, pick it up, convey it, take it to the pond before it's released to the ditch.
Matt, engineering, have anything to add? One of the things that seems to have been brought up is it looks like an awful lot of the drainages in this area are private drainages and seem to be possibly improperly maintained, and it's not a city problem, it's a neighborhood problem of people not keeping their drainages across our property clear and possibly causing flooding on their neighbor's property.
Yeah, this is all private. We do not have any existing drainage easements through here, so it should be privately maintained. You know, unfortunately, it doesn't always get done, you know, even if it is a city drainage easement. But, but it would be up to the individual property owners to maintain that and take care of that. And the city, you know, I've, I've talked with our, our transportation division about different areas when this has come up, and their answer's always been, we, we have the crews maintaining our own, and that's more work than, than they need right now. They, they do not want to get off onto private property and take the liability and the time that it would take to do that. So right now, that's the, the current policy. We stick within the city drainage easements and the city rideaways and maintain those only.
Thank you.
I believe, Don, this, this is a, I think the neighborhood is just, it's a long, longstanding neighborhood, and I think things are changing. I know that things have been changed with the city in implementing detention policy. But what happens generally is over, you know, in the past, developments were allowed to drain directly to downstream ditches, and over a period of time, of course, they grow larger, and then it's on the responsibility of the property owner to maintain water that's coming from region. And that's a particular problem for them, especially if you, you know, just look at the area and see Pinnacle Foods, you know, I don't think there's, not that they've done anything wrong, per se, but that water's been generated over development that hasn't been detained. So things are progressing with the city, but I think this neighborhood has fallen victim to several things happening and, and no one making changes to what they're doing with the water. And a large majority of the university drains through that Town Branch Creek as well, and they don't detain generally, so.
Okay. Could you address the eight-foot fence that Ms. Bowdre's commented?
I don't think that's a problem at all.
That's fine. We'll continue it around the property.
Is there someone wants to, have we closed it?
We've already closed public comment.
I'd like to count on the additional things that you just said, not what you did. Can you quick?
Well, if you'll make it quick, we'll make a departure from, from what we've done here.
16 South Duncan. And it, I don't think it's that the, that it had, that the private residents haven't been maintained. They maintain, they try. When I've been talking to people about the creek cleanup, they're all like, don't move my rocks, don't move my bricks, it's holding the creek bed back. But when you walk up on Sixth Street, there's 22-foot culverts and washouts over your head. It's not that they haven't been maintained, it's the tremendous amount of water that once it rains, that flows through Town Branch. It's that residents try to maintain their, their private section, but there's a tremendous, if you come down there and look, there's, I mean, 22-foot culverts filled with water up above, right under the railroad tracks coming right from Sixth Street on. There's a tremendous amount of water that's coming through that neighborhood and coming through that creek. After it rains behind my house, you know, it's up to my waist in that creek. So it's, there's a tremendous amount of water just in that watershed that we're coping with already, the cumulative fact with more development is there. But it's not the lack of the residents, they are trying as hard as they can to maintain their drainage and maintain their yards from washing away. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Unfortunately, there's no jurisdiction, the city has no jurisdiction over the state, and awful lot of that does come from the university. Mandy, do you, would you like to, do you have anything else to address on the comments from the neighbors, like possibly the sidewalks on Duncan? Possibly staff comments on sidewalks, whether or not to put sidewalks in on Duncan?
On the west side.
I've tried that sidewalk route before, and I always leave. So I don't think, I don't think that we're.
Especially since it's a park dedication?
Yes, sir. I understand Aubrey's concerns. He, he wants everything to stay natural, and that would, I'm sure Mr. Mathias would prefer not to build it if he didn't have to, but I don't believe that that will be, that's not a city requirement I generally question. The only thing I do want to talk, I do want to talk to you, I think, Don, maybe I can do this outside of this meeting next week about the lot lines we talked about? Because there are actually three existing parcels, and I'm wondering if we can do that with an adjustment rather than a lot split and going back to the entire, I'm a little concerned about the time constraint on that, because I think the next meeting is, would be June 23rd, when we could do the lot split at the planning commission.
If there are existing lots within this tract that can be adjusted to create the two parcels, if we're reducing the number of lots or maintaining the same number, we can prob, we can likely process a lot line adjustment instead of a split.
And that's administrative?
It will go to the plot review, review, the in-house plot review meeting, but then it's taken care of administratively. It's, it does not require a planning commission approval.
And we need to get that board of adjustment in Monday, on what I was looking at.
Monday's a deadline. That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions, comments?
It's just a, probably a typo, but in the packet, we talk about 650 feet of new sewer, and this says 550 feet. It is a typo.
We know where we've got to go, so it, it may be a difference in the calculation. I thought that we got everything there. We're basically going down the street to the next down, downstream manhole and then going to the east.
Whoever measured it, it's the same distance.
To City Ruler.
I see. I have another, I guess, detailed question on the lighting. It says building mounted fixtures will be provided. Do those include cutoff or glare blockers, or, I'm not even sure what our ordinances require, I just.
I'm not sure. I knew what the proposed ordinance was, but.
We've not adopted an outdoor lighting ordinance. We do have a restriction within the parking lot ordinance that provides that all lighting shall be shielded and directed downward away from adjoining residential properties. That's a condition that we've recommended.
It was mostly the building mounted fixtures that was.
Those are, James allegedly pointed downward from the building, off on the sides. It's something we can look at.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it won't be a problem with their location, but.
Other than that, from, from my perspective, you all have done a terrific job of listening to the neighborhood and working with them, reducing and majorly redesigning your project with a basket full of drainage problems that you all didn't ask for, but the site was tied up in. I'd like to make a motion that we forward LSD 3-13 to the full planning commission for approval.
And I'll concur. And I'd make one comment, that this has, the density is, has been reduced to an RMF-18 type density of, but it has a considerable reduction, and that's with the removal of the parkland. So actually, it was less than an RMF-18 density. So that's an infill project that's since the. So that's an install project that's sensitive to the neighbors where you've been able to eliminate a building, expand detention, create buffer strips, plant trees in people's yards, you know, there's considerable things that have been done here and it's, it'll be complimented on it.
And room for no more.
By the way, Mandy, you got the numbers.
That missed a standard. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is large-scale development for Sunbridge Center, Lot 9. It was submitted by Chris Brackett of Jorgensen Associations on behalf of Heating Enterprises, property located in Sunbridge Center. Don, is this yours?
Yes, this is mine. This is a request by the applicant to extend a large-scale development approval. The project, large-scale development, was originally approved by the subdivision committee November 29th, 2001, with a condition on that approval, that it be valid for one calendar year. We've passed November 29th, 2002, and the project has not been constructed at this point in time. The applicant has requested an extension of the approval in order to, to allow permitting of the development and without having it to, having to bring it back through the review process. Staff is recommending approval of an extension to November 5th, 2003. This will be consistent with the ordinance, which was adopted November 5th of last year for projects that were approved prior to July of 2002, which did not have a specific condition on them with a deadline. And I've included in your packet a copy of that ordinance and basically, had this project not had a specific condition of approval on it for a one, one-year deadline, then it would have fallen under the ordinance that was passed by council and it would be granted November, up to November 5th of 2003, to be permitted and underway in order to fall within the provisions of that ordinance. So that's what staff's recommending, is that extension to November 5th of this year.
Would this in any way impact the normal extension process? Should they need more time?
They would, I believe that they could still fall within the provisions of this ordinance, which does allow for a request, a formal request of the planning commission if an extension beyond this date is requested.
Chris, any comments?
Just the fact that.
Tell us who you are, I guess.
Chris Brackett of Jorgensen Associates, I'm here representing the owners. And the owners have developed a lot of office space in the same area and they believe when we started this that they needed this area, but after we got it approved, it kind of showed that they, Christ, delay it and now that they are getting some interest that they wouldn't like to build it.
I guess we don't have any more staff comments.
Don.
Lucky them. I guess at this time we'll take public comment. Is there anyone who would list, wish to speak on this administrative item for large-scale development? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the committee for questions, comments, motions.
Question, can we, if we, can we approve it at this level, I guess?
That's a good question. I believe you can because the original approval was at the subdivision committee level and this is the level where that condition was placed on the project. So I believe it would be appropriate for you to approve it at this level. I would say that all of the conditions of approval that went with the original large-scale are still in place and are still applicable.
Okay.
With the exception of the deadline.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Sorry. What was the condition? I mean, if this wasn't a conditional use, we wouldn't be here today, right? It would automatically be until November 11.
No, this was a large-scale development and the planning commission at the city council, or excuse me, at the subdivision committee level approved the project with a condition that it be valid for one calendar year.
Okay.
And so that was, that was just a, right, a standard condition of approval. At one point in time, probably in 1997, 98, staff began placing that as a standard condition on items. There were some that we missed it on. It was not an ordinance requirement until November of last year, when this new ordinance was adopted, placing an expiration on various types of development projects to include lot splits, conditional uses, large-scale developments. Previously, we'd only had an ordinance deadline on preliminary plats with a one calendar year provision for those.
Have there been any new, basically, rules adopted since?
I don't, that's, that's a very appropriate question and that's why the timeframe is pertinent, that we don't go too far into new projects and have new ordinances that would change the conditions of the property or the, or the development. I don't believe that there are ordinances that would modify this particular project to any great degree at all.
When the city council passed the extension across the board for ones that did not have the sunset clause on it, was there a, anything in that that required coming up to current standards for ones that were not up to, or did they, or they extended as approved?
They were extended as approved to a time specific, which is November 3rd of this calendar year of 2003.
So basically, this project fell in a slot, then it's just being extended at this time to, to meet the same criteria that all the other projects were given?
Correct.
Okay.
I would add that you're probably going to see another one of these in the Golden Corral Project in the near future because conditions have changed with regard to their ability to develop that site, but that's not an issue today.
I'll make a motion that we extend LSD 1-40 to November 5th, 2003.
I'll second.
And I'll concur.
Thank you.
Good luck, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next item on the agenda is for University Square, submitted by Bob Hill of Nickel Hill Group, a property located at the northwest corner of Sixth Street and Shiloh Drive, within the boundaries of Overlay District. The request is to amend approved commercial design standards to allow for four-wall signs and a variation in color around a bank building. Staff, could you give us a report on this?
This is a bit of a combination request. The University Square project was a large-scale development that was approved by the planning commission April 8th, 2002. In that project, when it was brought forward, the development identified all of the existing structures on the property as a part of the comprehensive redevelopment proposal. This is the site basically at Sixth and I-540, with the exception of the gas station, the old Superior Federal Bank and Marvin's IGA, and then a strip of commercial development, which we talked a little bit about when we were mentioning Ruby Tuesdays earlier, which is adjacent to it. When this project was approved by the planning commission April 8th of 2002, elevations for the large scale were submitted for review. Those elevations showed a consistent red accent stripe or element and awnings throughout the development. And updated and improved facades for all of the buildings were proposed with consistent materials and colors. And with that, I'm going to pass around the elevations that you saw as planning commission when this project came forward. The project, the building that we're specifically addressing today is the standalone bank building. It was previously occupied by Superior Federal Bank and First Security Bank is now proposing to be a new tenant in that location. The elevation for that particular structure is the last one in the packet that you have in your hands. Also specific to that particular site, in 1990, signage for the standalone bank building was permitted and installed. That activity, the signage location for the original Superior Federal Bank, happened prior to the adoption of the overlay district in 1994. Current status of the project with regard to commercial design standards, a new tenant for the standalone bank does propose to repaint the red accent stripes and the parapet cap piece with a teal-blue color, which is a signature color for that, for that company. With regard to the design overlay district signage, the bank proposes to install four-wall signs, one on each side of the structure. The overlay district does permit one wall sign on the side of the structure which faces a street right-of-way. In instances where the structure has frontage on more than one public street, in the overlay district, two-wall signs may be permitted. That's a specific overlay district issue. The applicant would, does prefer and propose to place wall signage on all four sides of the structure. I've included with your information, and I'll go over my recommendation in a second, but I've included with your information a copy of the overlay district ordinance as well as information from commercial design standards and the variances section with regard to the overlay district. Recommendations with regard to the commercial design standards approval and the treatment of colors and materials on the structure, staff would recommend that the accent striping and parapet cap remain the unifying red accent color, which provides uniformity and consistency throughout the development. Teal-blue awnings and signage would permit the tenant the ability to customize the space to their corporate identity and staff would not be opposed to awnings and signage having those corporate colors. Then with regard to the sign proposal, staff recommends approval of the proposed 48-square-foot wall sign for the south or the front elevation, which is permitted by ordinance. In addition, staff recommends approval of one additional wall sign on the west elevation, which is the front entrance of the structure. That does require a planning commission approval under the variances section with regard to the overlay district. We have had information brought forward there, and I'll, I'll let the applicant kind of go through the process they've gone through to get to this point. A signed package has been requested by the applicant of the signed company and they're, they're represented here today with regard to the four signs that are proposed. And I think I'm just going to let Bob and Jim and Nancy kind of go through where they are and how they got there.
Okay. That being said, could you all introduce yourselves and give us the benefit of your presentation?
Well, I'm Bob Hill with the Nickel Hill Group. And I'm, I'm basically here today to tell you that the owner of the property, Mary Chrissick Cruz, is in full support of the tenant who wants to do what they want to do to identify their building and their, their business. When the large-scale development went through, we kind of, it was a picture of here's what we're going to make it all uniform, but we certainly don't have a problem with the business in an independent building there that is part of the shopping center. But that is their corporate identity and, and the owner of the shopping center does not have a problem with him repainting the trim to his corporate colors, which is teal. From the side, as far as the sign issue goes, again, the owner of the shopping center is in full support of all the signage that the bank can, can be allowed. I think that there's a good, good argument to get the four signs and certainly three. The south side is facing onto Highway 62, which is a main thoroughfare. The west side is their main entrance. The east side faces I-540, which is very good visibility and effectively has frontage also, by the way. Shopping center has a curb cut onto the access road at Shiloh. This building is a part of that shopping center. So it does have frontage on another road and should be allowed signage in that direction also. For the fourth sign, if you would please allow it, I think it would help them also if it has one on the north side because there's a lot of traffic in the shopping center generated by the north building. Of the 40,000 square feet in the shopping center, 24,000 square feet of that is in the north building. Way shopping centers work is you try to attract businesses that work together and create a good tenant mix so that the people, the businesses in that shopping center can feed off of each other, if you appreciate that term, I guess. One business attracts another business and when other businesses attract it there, they can see the sign for First Security Bank, so.
Can you show us on this picture where the changes would be made on the?
This is.
Okay.
With, with the modern, I'm Jim Taylor with First Security Bank. With the modern technology of digital imagery, I don't think that was a correct word, but close enough. You get the yes. We're able to show you a little bit of what we were looking for as far as identifying the building. Again, the teal is our, our signature color. We've, we've used it in all of our literature, our, our ads, our buildings where possible. We use it everywhere. And Nancy had contacted the city, and I'll let her talk about that earlier, before we ever ordered the signs or before I ever signed the lease, and she was told from the city that we could have up to 150 square feet of signage per side, per building, per side of the building. And based on.
Before I ordered the signs.
And based on that, we went ahead and ordered the signs and the signage is here and ready to be installed. But this, this shows you two, two looks, if you will, of the building.